City Council is in session, roll call please. Here, okay, and I neglected to have Councilman Naskalko do the Transportation Committee items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move items seventy-six through eighty-four.
We have a motion by Councilman Naskalko, a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and were there addendum items as well?
Yes.
Let me...
Two items of the next...
Mm-hmm.
Bearing first two items under the addenda, asking for those to be reset to January twenty-third at ten-thirty.
Second.
And that's because they forgot to do the notice.
Thank you for that, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then you also have the memo from Mr. Gudes to remove this special call session for tomorrow.
Yes, okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, are you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And you also have the resolution presented by Marty for the appointments in the Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, so we have a second, we have a motion by Councilman Naskalko, a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you ma'am, okay, next we move to our public hearings.
Move items eighty-seven through ninety-two.
To open, okay, we have a motion opened by Councilman Naskalko, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and if, and if anyone is here to speak on these items and testify, for those of y'all who are still here, please stand up and be ready to be sworn in.
Please stand and raise your right hand, do you swear to have the truth, the moral truth, and the ethical truth? Yes, please.
Okay, we begin with item eighty-seven.
Mary Semeniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, number eighty-seven through ninety-one are all second readings for cases that you heard at your October hearings, all required changes have been made or at the city clerk's office.
Oh, thank you sir, yes, that's me. Okay, and you know what, I have to abstain from this one, so...
Wow.
Could you just, Councilman, just announce your...
Yes sir, I am a counsel with a law firm that in the past, and I believe presently, has represented Tampa General Hospital.
And you're filing for me?
Yes sir, and I'm filing it, and I'll hand it over.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all right, applicant?
Good afternoon, Truett Gardner, four hundred North Hasty Drive, here on behalf of TGH, we had a unanimous vote in October, all revisions to the site plan have been made, and here to answer any questions should you have.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? See none, anyone from the public who wish to speak on this item?
Move to close.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, with a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Dingfelder, if you wouldn't mind taking number eighty-seven.
Sure, in regard to REZ nineteen dash sixty-five, I'm going to move the following ordinance for a second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of six oh six and seven twenty-two West Kennedy Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classifications PD, plan development, office, business, professional, and medical, transportation, service facility, retail, residential, um, excuse me, residential multifamily hospital, hotel, motel, congregate living facility, large group care, principal parking, nursing, convalescent, and extended care facility, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Gudes, please record your vote.
I'm not going to...
Is it abstaining? Motion carries with Carlson being activated, vote and Vera abstaining.
Mister, Mister Gardner, I'd just say that that's the most mixed-use project I think I've ever read, so...
Wouldn't give you a mouthful there.
There you go.
You have Vera as no voting instead of abstaining?
I consider a press vote.
I didn't press a button.
No.
I have no votes.
No, it says not voting.
Instead of the abstaining column, it says...
We don't have, we don't have...
That's fine.
Ah, okay, okay.
I'm just, I just, you know, you gotta keep my eye on it. All right, thank you very much, now can move to item eighty-eight. Anyone here for eighty-eight?
Steve Miccolini, I almost said good evening, council, but, good afternoon. Respectfully requesting your approval, we had no objections on this when we went through on first reading. There was a companion piece that was part of the land use amendment that preceded this, and you adopted the land use amendment at your last council hearing. Respectfully requesting your approval.
Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, being none, is anyone here from the public here to publicly comment on item number eighty-eight, if so, please come forward.
Move to close.
Second, motion to close by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Naskalko, or I'm sorry, Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Gudes, do you mind sir reading item eighty-eight?
Thanks, Chairman, file number REZ nineteen dash seventy-five, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of seventy-seven oh two South Mascot Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification IG Industrial General to PD Plan Development, residential senior family attached, providing an effective date.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Gudes, second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor? Record your vote.
Motion carries with Carlson being activated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Council.
Next one with item eighty-nine.
Good afternoon, Council Morris Massey, one-on-one East Kennedy Boulevard here in Tampa. Again, this was approved unanimously, we've made the revisions to the site plan, and we'd ask your approval on second reading, I'm here if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you sir, any questions for the petitioner? Okay, is anyone here from the public here to comment on item eighty-nine, if so, come forward.
Move to close.
Second, motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Naskalko, do you serve my taking item eighty-nine?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of seven-eleven South Dale Maverie Highway in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification PD, plan development, bank with a drive-in, and business professional office, to PD Plan Development, Bank with Drive-In, Medical Office, Business Professional Office, Clinic, providing an effective date.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Naskalko, a second by Councilman Miranda, please record your vote.
Motion carries with Carlson being activated.
Thank you very much, next we move to item number ninety, if anyone is here for ninety. Just in time.
You missed it, we moved on.
Okay, good, was it, did I win? Clayton Brickelmeier, Brickelmeier Law Group, here for the applicant, available for questions, we made our changes, and appreciate staff, thanks.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, there being none, is anyone here from the public here to comment on item number ninety, if so, please come forward.
Move to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Citro, do you serve my taking item ninety?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, file number REZ nineteen dash eighty, I'm moving an ordinance being presented for second reading, adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of six twenty-four South MacDill Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classifications, excuse me, CG Commercial General and RM twenty-four residential multifamily to PD Plan Development, Medical Office, and Business Professional Office, providing an effective date.
Second.
As the provision, the petitioner has met the burden of proof, including waivers and site plan changes.
Question? Yes sir, go ahead. Mister Brickelmeier?
Mister Brickelmeier?
Yes. Yes sir.
It might be, it might be way off. Number ninety was the tree, right?
No tree.
That wasn't the tree?
Number ninety is the one with no tree.
No, that was...
I was very happy to report there was no tree, as I recall.
That's why I was confused, because I thought the address was wrong, okay, this was not the tree.
No, this is on MacDill.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair, my motion still stands.
Okay.
Well, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, please record your vote.
Motion carries with Carlson being activated.
Okay, next we move onward to item number ninety-one.
Hello, this is Miriam Weber, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant on item ninety-one? Okay, thank you very much ma'am, is anyone here from the public here to comment on item number ninety-one?
Move to close.
We have, yes sir, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to tell Ms. Weber, is it? On the record, that that is the most well-behaved two-year-old, she sat patiently without one fuss the whole morning, so...
Oh, that's nice.
There you go, and we see her feet in response.
I agree with that, okay, we have a motion to close, I think, was it, Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Miranda, do you serve my taking item ninety-one?
Right, Chairman, move out number SU two nineteen dash zero eight, moving ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance approving a special use, a special use permit, SU, S, S two, approving a school in the RS fifty residential senior family zoning district in the general vicinity of sixty-seven sixteen South Trash Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, they're up, providing an effective date.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Naskalko, please record your vote.
Motion carries with Carlson being activated.
Thank you, next move onward to item number ninety-two.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination, this is the vacating for the airport property, the agent could not return prior commitment, so I said I'd be here if there was anything that happens.
Thank you, okay, any questions? Okay, anyone here from the public here to comment on item number ninety-two, if so, please come forward.
Move to close.
A motion to close by Councilman Naskalko, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, do you serve my taking item ninety-two?
I do not, it appeared I voted for it before, and I do recall, and just, just editorially, typically I don't like vacating alleys, but in this case, this was over by the airport, it was very industrial and that sort of thing, and it made a lot of sense, so... I will move file VAC dash nineteen dash twenty-one, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning portions of right-of-way known as West South Avenue, West Osborne Avenue, and North Rennelli Drive in replat of Drew Park, a subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same more, being more fully described in section one here, subject to certain easement reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth here, and provided effective, and I correct myself, it's not vacating alleys, it's vacating streets.
Do we have a second, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Naskalko, please record your vote.
Motion carries with Carlson being activated.
Great, and that's the final one for our land use hearings, let me see over here on the staff reports, I wanted to motion, and Mister Shelby and I talked about this, I just had a very busy week for item one-on-one, just to have that held in, in, uh, next week's Tampa City Council meeting.
You want to do it, I'm sorry?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
November twenty-first.
There you go, sounds good, thank you.
And if we can, Mr. Chairman, could we take the opportunity to make that something that I'll work with you on, instead of the legal department, city council attorney, and I'll certainly work, take it from you, unless you want to have it in your name, that you'll come back?
I usually write it, but I mean...
I know you usually do, but the question is...
We can do that, that's fine.
Okay, but the other thing is to correct it from being encouraged, or is...
Yeah, discouraging.
Discouraging. Take the opportunity for posterity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, who was that second by, if we have?
I think I seconded your motion.
Okay, oh, I guess, I guess you're right, I'll hand it over to Gavin, so go for it.
We have a motion by Councilman Vera, with a second by Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that was related to item one-on-one?
Yes sir, and I don't think we have any other items, okay, so let's go to motions, et cetera, Councilman Dingfelder. And I'm sorry, before we do that, something I'm gonna be, we're gonna be keeping an eye on, because I think we were bit by it today, is whenever we have staff reports to specify if, at the time of making the motion, if you all want staff to be coming to speak for it, because today we had an abundance of them, and we had to move through them very fast, and I usually like to give more time to them, you know, more robust discussion, but just given the traffic jam that we had today, that can be easily prevented by doing that, so just from here on out, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so the key there is we just say you want them to appear?
Yep.
Or you want a written report, or both?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
I was thinking of that, I'm sorry, just to interject, because we talked about this a little bit at our agenda review, I think what's helpful is Chief Bennett is now requiring all the staff to get their staff reports in the Tuesday prior to the following week's hearing, and then we give them to the clerk, I believe, by Thursday, so... The point being, we're trying to get the report, the written reports, all the staff is trying to get the written reports to the council members a week in advance, and so, with the idea being that then if you have questions, you can call us, you can reach out, you can ask people to meet with you, and then if you still need, you know, someone to actually appear, the hope is that we can, sort of the default is just a written report with obvious exceptions, when it is important to have someone at the podium, but again, that's, that was part of the motivation behind getting the reports to you earlier than the staff reports used to get to council in the past, so...
Thank you ma'am, Councilman Carlson, just on that point, is there a way to limit the number of them, I know several of these were mine, so it's partly my fault, but should we, should we... And that's actually what I, I originally intended to do that, but then when we started looking at merely having reports, right, I withdrew that, but what I'm gonna start doing is having five reports that require live appearances per meeting, so that we can limit that. If there's something that is compelling, we can do six, you know what I mean, but, but pretty much having five, so that we can avoid what happened today. And, and the, the delay, I think, to the public, and that includes public comment, as well as land development, I mean, there's everyday folks waiting for that, and they had to wait a long time, including past lunch, was relatively modest, but the real issue that suffered, I think, was just a discussion on the issues, because I had to hurry up everybody, so, you know how that is, yeah, so we'll do that. Go ahead, sir.
Just not to belabor that too much, but frankly, I think the discussions that we've had, just today, for example, that circled around the various staff reports are very helpful, and they wouldn't be much of a discussion if the staff person wasn't there, so, anyway, I guess we can continue that discussion when, when Mister Bennett returns. Okay, motions, so Ms. Duncan appeared in front of us to talk about brick streets, and she gave us the written report as well. She also indicated that it's a little premature, because, you know, that they really haven't got around to, they haven't got very far in terms of the pipes projects, obviously, because we just, council just approved it a month or two ago, so with that said, I'd like to have Ms. Duncan come back a year from now, and I have no date, I'll just say the first meeting in November, first regular agenda meeting in November, and appear and continue this discussion about the brick streets, asphalt, et cetera, as, as it was laid out in her memo, and see if there's any update.
Second, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In regard to the drones, and you all heard me mention this, I'd like TPD to, to come back, well, they don't have to appear, it can be a written report, to give us a written report summarizing the use of the drones that were just purchased, in a very cursory way, but just, just so we can continue to monitor that, you know, how they're used, and to make sure that they're used appropriately under the state statute, and that would be, let's say, the, the first meeting, first regular meeting in December of twenty-twenty. Oh, yes, and the, and also, you wanna, you wanna add that?
Yeah.
Okay, and also, it was suggested that some public information get out to the community currently, like now, and this would just be, I guess we would urge the administration, can't make them, but we'd urge the administration to use the PIO system and get the information out to the community that the drone, that we, we are gonna be purchasing the drones, and this is the purpose that we are using the drones, and this is not what we're gonna use the drones for. Like, this is what we're gonna use them for, this is, and this isn't what we're gonna use them for.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, with a friendly amendment by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Naskalko, all in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
One other thing, in my absence, what was it, Charlie, you used to say when you were out for four years, you used to say you were out in the wilderness or something?
I forget.
Yeah, anyway, when I, when I was out in the wilderness for seven or eight years, I always thought that we should honor Mayor Iorio, who I served under, several others served under, at least Charlie, honor her in a big way, and, and I kept thinking that Fortieth Street was her signature project. I mean, she worked so hard on Fortieth Street for years and years with the county and the state, and to put it all together in terms of really making that a very, very nice boulevard, now, can be controversial in terms of roundabouts and that sort of thing, but at the end of the day, they built that bridge, that was a new bridge and the whole nine yards, and, and I thought it'd be a really, you know, she got a garage named after her, which I don't think is very exciting. I thought it'd be really nice to name Fortieth Street, all are part of Fortieth Street, after Mayor Pam Iorio.
And Councilman...
And I know that might not be our, our purview, but my motion would be to look into the opportunity to do that in conjunction with Mayor Castor, and, you know, whatever administrative review is necessary.
And, and I'm happy to, I know you seconded it, but I'm happy to support it, considering that I believe Fortieth Street was a hundred million dollars?
It was huge.
Overall, which is one of the largest in the city's history, so of course, you know, it would definitely merit it, and I'm happy to support it, thanks.
Great, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything, and that's it today, thank you. Councilman Gudes?
Thanks, Chairman, in reference to the earlier comments about public comment, staff reports, you know, we're public servants, and I know that sometimes we've gone long, and people criticize us for going long, but for me, I, I don't care about going long. I care about what the public needs to know, what they want to know, and they're taxpayers, and we're, we're paid by the taxpayers to do a job. So, in reference to staff having to wait, you know, and I heard the comments from the people in the audience, and I, I sympathize that staff has to sit around sometimes, sir, I, I do, but at the end of the day, they're paid to be a city employee, and we're paid to hear what the people have to say and to do the people's business. And I, I don't know how everyone feels, but I only can tell you how I feel and how I know the citizens feel, and I, I must let the citizens know that I'm on their side when, when we talk about them not having their opportunity, have to wait for their opportunity. So, in the future going forward, we need to look at that, because I think that is a critical issue. Staff reports are, are very critical, we have to have discussions on them, and I understand we want to limit them, but by the same token, a lot of times, it's something that I may miss, or somebody may miss, and then it's brought out, doing discussion, and now we're changing something that we thought we were gonna go one road, and now we're down another road, so we have to be careful about just saying we're gonna change all these processes to accommodate people on certain issues, so I want us to be aware of that, and make sure that, you know, our charter says that staff is supposed to appear before us when we request it for information, and I want to make sure we're clear on that, that if there's information that needs to be given to us, that staff comes forth and gives that information, if it takes us a while to get it out, it just takes a while to get it out, but we have to be mindful, we're here to do the people's business, and no matter what it costs, or whatever, or over the TV or whatever, it is what it is. This is our house, and we have to, our house, you know, we can't be dictated to by, by, by other people to say, we should do this, we should do that, we have to be mindful that we have to do what we have to do for the people. So I just want to be, that you guys be mindful that, that is my position on that, it doesn't matter how long it takes, what it takes to get the job done, but at the end of the day, the people know that we're here to serve them. So, on, on that note, Mr. Chairman...
And if I may, before, was, were you gonna make a motion related to that?
No, no, I want to make a motion...
Did anybody want to have a comment on that, or Councilman Carlson, or Councilman Naskalko?
You know, I, I make comments, like, you know, I'm free till seven o'clock tonight, I have nothing until nine AM, and I'm, and I try to be funny, which I'm not really funny, but, okay. The, the point that I make is however long it takes to get through the agenda, you know, I gotta like the, we gotta like the two, and echoing a lot of what Councilman Gudes says, to do the work of the people, however, however long it takes. And, and that's it, when we campaign, we say, you know, we're gonna be your voice, we're gonna listen, we're gonna this and that, so, you know, if we're here two hours per meeting, or twelve hours per meeting, it is what it is, and, and I'm happy to do my job and, and service to the community.
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I think the most important thing we can do is listen to public, and there are lots of different ways to do that, but if, if folks come here, I think we should try to listen to them, and the, the arguments that the folks made this morning are legitimate, that people have jobs, and when people ask me when they should come down for public, public comment, I don't even know what to tell them, because I don't know when it's gonna be, I wish, you know, you have a hard job juggling all these things, but I wish we could have a time certain for public comment, maybe in addition to a time certain for staff, but maybe, you all may know better than I, but even if we said from nine, well, time certain nine-thirty till ten, and then if we have too many, then we'll come back after staff reports or something, but at least have a time where people know that they can come down here and, and speak without having to spend the whole day.
Anyone else?
Mister Chair, if, if I may, in my opinion, the, the statements from our constituents, from the public, my opinions should come first. If, if we are to listen and have it time-sensitive for not only them, but for staff, why don't we just have it first on the agenda after the invocation, after the pledge, after roll call, go right into public comment, that way, they have their set time, that way then we can do staff after that, after, after our celebrations of other, other things, that is just my opinion, and I, I lay it out there on our dais.
Mrs. Zelman, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna volunteer to help, we, you and I have talked about this, and having practiced in front of Hillsborough County, and Casco County, and other cities, I've seen how they handle their agenda, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement of ours, and I, and I wholeheartedly agree that we've gotta, we gotta do a better job of giving the public some certainty as to when they can be heard, the people that are here for second reading, some certainty as to when they'll be, so I, and I think there's a way to do it, we're, you know, again, it's being done across the country, we can figure out a way, but I was just gonna offer, I'm happy to work with the chair, whoever, and the clerk's office, to see if we can, and Marty, to see if we can reorganize our agenda to make it more sensitive to all those things.
And, and there's increment, and I agree in the sense of, obviously, the public's comment should be first, what we had today in this particular circumstance, that I frankly handled to the best of my ability, and it's, it's certainly not, it's not, it's not an easy position, no matter who, and I'm, and I'm sure everyone's gonna have a crack at it, trust me, over the years, is trying to make sure that everybody's heard, it's just that today, yesterday during, or I guess it was two days ago in the agenda review, we had asked if everybody wanted staff to be here live, and everybody said yes, so that created a heck of a traffic jam for purposes of today. I think the best way to do that is, like, for example, we had, I had Karen, I had Karen Clay, we had Tampa Bay Water, we could in the future have that after public comment, those kind of presentations that are non-ceremonial, that's something that would mitigate it, because actually today was the first time that we really had that kind of a traffic jam, and it was because of the, you know, number one, the significant number of staff reports, which we can deal with, and that as well. And, and another issue is as well, people who are here for, for land use hearings, you've got a lot, number one, you've got a lot of people paying attorneys that, that charge a lot by the hour, you got a lot of people who are just pro se, they're not here with attorneys, and they have to wait a long time, so there's a lot of courtesy to be done in that regard, and let's work on something, and Mrs. Zelman, to fashion something so that there's more foreseeability, you know, it's, it's certainly something that behooves us, so I, I agree with that a hundred percent. Today was just a terrible traffic jam, and Councilman...
Just as a suggestion, we have it at ten-thirty, maybe you can move it to eleven, and staff reports should be cleared by the time you get there.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah, 'cause ten o'clock is probably, you know, a pant size that's probably too small for our waist, you know?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that you're working with the chief of staff, the staff reports at ten o'clock, council has its actual order of business codified in your rules of procedure, and as part of that, you direct, uh, plan it when they set these hearings, according to your rules, and these have fluctuated over time, council, these are not my rules, these are not Ms. Zelman's rules, the city attorney's rules, the staff's rules, these are your rules. the staff's rules, these are your rules, and your order of business is what works best for council, based on your discussion. Right now, even with the staff reports set for a time certain, it's not in your rules right now, ultimately, if it works, or however you ultimately want to do that, the direction would be for me to amend your rules, your staff reports are not in the rules, but what are in the rules are first, second readings are set for 9:30, and that's what your petitioners and the public expect that, and your second reads are 9:30, and your first reads are set for 10:30. And that's right in the middle, and right in the middle of that is your 10 o'clock, and I counted by my best number, you had 15 presentations by staff today.
Yeah.
Based on what was also removed from the consent document.
And I guess, Councilman Dingfelter, did you?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I agree completely with my two gentlemen to the left, is that, you know, we're all here, we've been elected to be here, Thursday is the day, and whatever it takes is whatever it takes, whether or not we're here till 5:00 or 12:00 or whatever, there's nothing special about noon. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't be too hard on yourself, because if you think about it, we were here 9:00 till, what, about 12:30, we took an hour lunch, and then we finished by, we finished with an additional half hour after lunch.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So frankly, with a very full agenda, with lots of staff reports, with a couple of external items, you know, I think we did very well. I think one of the things, actually, to compliment you on also, Mr. Chairman, is the, I don't see any fault, and I know I can be long-winded, but I don't see any fault in you reminding us periodically, okay, are we almost done, let's, you know, we need to keep it tight, blah, blah, blah. I thought you did that actually pretty effectively today.
Thank you.
And I don't have any problem with you doing that. I might not always listen, but I don't have any problem with you doing that.
And I always tell people that whenever, my job here is to deal with procedure with substance, we are seven individuals who are duly elected by the people of our districts or the city, and if members want to bring forth an item on whatever issue may be, that's of no, I can have no entanglements with that whatsoever. Whatever you all choose to bring, that's up to the individual members who are democratically elected, and I never get in the way of that. It's just whenever we're trying to, you know, fit stuff in. But again, I think there are small incremental changes that we can make, that can build on the changes that we've made, that I think will go a long way. But I will say this, which is with the time certain, this has really been the first time when we've had a delay of 30, 40 minutes for public comment, which is the core of representative democracy, I think, for us, but it's something that can be amended in the future, very simply, in my opinion. Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment you on how you handled the public and your bravery in walking into the other room. I think it's important to let people have a chance to vent and discuss their issues, and when I walked by there, I saw that they seemed to be happy, they were frustrated, they couldn't speak, but they were happy that you at least, you know, met with them, so thank you for doing that.
And that's always the key, which is that people want to be heard, you know, a lot of people are frustrated for whatever reason, the main thing is people want to feel respect, and when they see their elected officials, in perception and reality, disrespecting them, which is why I met with that nice young woman and some other people, because from up here, the perception could be that I'm being, you know, sitting on a throne. No, you know, I want to deal with all the issues. I share some of her frustrations, but you got to give people respect, so that's, you know. So we'll be dealing with that, and we have CRA next week, but then a week after that, hopefully, we can make some incremental changes for that, in the event that something like this comes up again, which I think is relatively rare, but, yeah. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Kent, thank you for the issue, and for today we got through. I'd like to make a motion, the chief judge, I went to a, the Safe and Sound Group, they had their annual meeting with all the representatives there, and they asked that at some point, they come and make a presentation in reference to what all they're doing in Hillsborough County around juvenile justice. So this time, I'd like to make a motion, have the 13 judicial court appear before council to make a presentation regarding juvenile justice diversionary programs. I'd like to have this presented at the December 5 regular session, council.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Goods, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman, and maker of the motion, did you want to associate a period of time of length for that presentation?
Yes, and how long, what you're looking at, Councilman?
I don't know, more than 10, 15 years.
Okay, how about we do 10 minutes for the presentation, five minutes for discussion?
That'd be fine.
Okay, good. Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir. Sir, I would also, you know, we've got an issue...
Just going to invite them.
Oh, they've already been invited, they just were working on the dates with us, and we got the date, so I made the motion today. You know, we've got a lot of issues with our cemeteries, and here in Hillsborough County especially, and the city limits, and I asked for a special meeting back on the 24th, but some things have changed since that time. So I'd like to amend the previous motion I made on 10/24/19 regarding the special call meeting set for 11/8 at Robles Park, to be postponed, and the need for it to be reexamined until after the Housing Authority updates report on the matter on the Zion Cemetery is heard at City Council on December 5, 2019, and our regular session.
Was that for a report on that day?
Yeah, they're due to come on December 5 for a full report.
Is there any way, Councilman, that we can have that, have you already coordinated that with them?
That's already, that's already...
That's already by motion of council, it's on your agenda.
Oh, December 5, I don't, oh, I'm sorry, I see it there. Excuse me, my bad, okay. Was that a motion then?
Yes, sir.
The motion was then to remove it, remove the Zion Cemetery for tomorrow, and you'll have rescheduled.
Right, that special call meeting, correct.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Goods, a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
I have one last appeal, gentlemen. As you know, a lot of our communities within the city have what they call actual Christmas tree lightings. A lot of my constituents have called and been telling me about this special event that a lot of communities have. I had the Parks and Recreation Director Paul Dowell looking to an actual, real Christmas tree-like ceremony in Robert Cole Park, which is located on ML King and 19th Street. They came back to me with a proposal from a company called Festive, I need to have the correct name to it here, Festive Lighting, who actually does this type of work of erecting the Christmas trees with the lighting and so forth. They came back and told me what it would take to do this particular project. That project will cost probably $54,000 to actually have a 30-foot tree lighting and put it in at the location of the pond. Of course, we don't, we don't, we don't have that kind of funds, and apparently, the CRA, according to Mr. Johnson, with the new rules and regulations, can't help build this platform and so forth with the tree. So now, we're going to have to take a step back. So now, my point is to have an appeal, and early, I talked to Mr. Vero, our interim financial chief officer, in reference to how, what we go about setting the fund. Apparently, the Parks and Recreation already have a fund called Friends of Tampa Bay, so I'm asking it of my colleagues or any of the business community at large, if they could possibly contribute to this endeavor of getting a Christmas tree lighting program, tree erected in East Tampa. So, just want to put that out there to the community and to my colleagues.
Just for clarification, it's Friends of Tampa Recreation?
Yeah, Friends of Tampa, he's going to give me a full name, but I think it's Friends of Tampa Recreation, we can donate funds, and they can earmark specifically for that project.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Meniskaku?
I'm glad you brought that up, you know, I'm already getting, we're all getting invited to the tree lightings, Hyde Park, downtown, everybody's got a tree, East Tampa doesn't have a tree, so, and West Tampa do.
I don't have a tree.
I have the Charlie Brown. But, you know, you're right, the neighborhood, the community out there, you know, why don't they get to enjoy, you know, what everybody else gets, so, that's it, thanks.
Councilman Citro?
Nothing today, something in the future, though, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Murray?
I agree with the plan, but $54,000, you put another 60, 70,000, you can build a house. I mean, that's how I see it. I mean, it just, you can't do everything, because at the end, you're not going to have a house.
Well, it's going to cost you, you've got to go with the platform, and make it all these tools, you need to, you know, so, it's a one-time shot, you get the platform, you go.
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that city staff come back and give us suggestions for ordinances for protecting the bricks under asphalt.
And when would you like that back, sir?
Two months. So, because it's written, we don't have to put down a specific date, do we?
Pardon, excuse me?
I think we do, just so that they have a time.
Is it a written report?
Yeah, just written.
If you just want a written report, my suggestion is you put it on the agenda, that way it...
Yeah, okay, what date is?
January 9.
Yeah, how about January?
January 9, okay, good.
Ms. Elman?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just asking for clarification, when you say protect them, do you mean protect them as the asphalt's being removed for the pipes project, or do you mean...
Yeah, to, so the motion was to ask staff to give us recommended possible ordinances to protect, and I'll add preserve, the bricks under asphalt streets.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, January 8 is going to be the first meeting after the holidays, and there are going to be...
Yeah, and this will just be a staff report, so I don't think it's going to be too robust. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by whom? Councilman Meniskaku, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that date was, what, January 9?
January 9.
January 9.
Second thing is, I would like to make a motion to offer commendation to the Thomas Jefferson School Alumni Association for raising to the state 178,000 in scholarships to deserving college-bound students. This commendation will be presented on Saturday, November 12.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who brings? You, who do you want presenting that, because I have that on my desk. All right, you want to give it?
Yoli's thing?
Yeah.
You all be there.
You can give it, I mean, I want to be there, but I've got to leave, I'll be there for a little bit.
Well, we'll figure it out.
He's the Jefferson guy.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did you say November 12, or did you say Saturday, November?
This Saturday.
No, it's Saturday, no, November 12, it's this Saturday.
Sorry, November 9, sorry.
Okay.
It's this, it's the proper 9, you're right, it's this Saturday.
And Yoli Kapine that evening is being inducted into the Jefferson Hall of Fame, that's right?
As for it?
Yeah, 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 so I'll be there to honor our friend. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second, did you second him? By Councilman Meniskaku, all in favor? Any opposed?
I just have one thing, I'd like to have a commendation made for Corner Caliente, which has been going on for 16 years, they draw a crowd from anywhere from 50,000 to 60,000 for free to have...
It was in West Tampa.
All of Elopis Park, and presented the first meeting we have in December.
Yes, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda.
I don't know what day that is.
Let me see if we have, we have not, actually, no commendations that day. A second by whom?
Aye.
By Councilman Meniskaku, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir? And did you have anything else, Paul? Nothing? Okay, just very briefly for me, if I may, this past Saturday, I gave a commendation to the Tampa Hispanic Bar Association for the 13th Anniversary Gala, I'd like to retroactively motion for that, if I may.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Second, I would like to do pursuant to the presentation from our friend Karen Clay, a motion for a letter to the Hillsborough State Delegation opposing cuts to Medicaid waivers and the present plans for revisions.
Second.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
And then lastly, in wake of the recent incident where a car crashed into Mel's Hot Dogs and Bush Boulevard, I wanted to motion for F Doc to come to present on safety enhancement to the roadway, including lowering the speed limit at December 5 meeting, to talk about their corridor study that's to be released in 2020.
Second, with onions and mustard.
And Mel, I think, is coming.
Onions and mustard.
So that would be fun.
Onions and mustard. We have a motion from Chairman Vera.
For F Doc to come and update us on the safety improvements that are being, and prospectively lowering the speed limit.
And Councilman, your office will coordinate that invitation?
We already have, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
One question, because Jean Duncan texted me after Councilman Carlson made his motion, and she asked if we could push your request to later in January, she said they're doing the research, but they need a little more time. I think you had said the first meeting in January?
Yeah, what's available?
How about the 23rd?
23rd?
January.
23rd of January, do we need a vote again?
I think we do.
So I'd like to make a motion to move it to January 23rd?
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Citro with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, with that said, I had a motion, though, if I were to come back a year from now, on the, I can just strike my motion.
I went ahead and did mine, because I think they're a little bit different. This is just specifically to try to get suggested ordinances that we need to put in place. Then the next thing is, what do we, I think, where do we store them, what do we do with them? Do we restore roads, isn't that kind of where you were leading?
Yeah, I'll move to strike mine, because I think you're going to hit a lot of those issues when we get to yours, so, you're, I'll strike mine this November, December.
I got a bunch of calls from Hyde Park this morning already, so.
Do we have a second to Councilman Dingfelter's motion?
Second, to strike my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then, we have a motion from Councilman Vera regarding F Doc coming to speak to council, with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And then, just very briefly, obviously, this, what, Monday is Veterans Day, and happy Veterans Day to Simon Dingfelter, along with all other individuals who have served, and I know on Sunday at Villa Brothers Park, from I think 12 to 3, there's a Veterans Day event, then that Monday at the Veterans Park at 301, there's a Veterans Day event, and also on, at Moffitt, I think at 8 or 9, and they always raise the flag, and they always have some individuals there, and what else was I going to say? I think that's it.
All right, motion, move to receive and file?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Meniskaku, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing.
Do you wish to reschedule the ATU December?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Yep, ATU, we're doing that every other month, so we're going to seek to reschedule that to December the 5.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera, a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, move, move to receive and file?
We have a motion, receive and file, by Councilman Meniskaku, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are done.